It's something. It's a big one.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, we're going to start on time today. Good afternoon, everybody. Call over to the work session for the Sierra Vista City Council for July 17, 2017. We have two of our members who are out on excused absence. So today's warm-up is a presentation on bond refinancing, and I'll turn over to Mr. Petuchek to enlighten us.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Mueller, members of council. As you're aware, over the past number of weeks, I've been briefing you about the progress that we've been making with regards to refinancing the three bonds that we have outstanding, two municipal property corporation and one related to the sewer fund. We've been working with Mr. Tom Hocking, who is the city's longtime financial consultant in his extensive experience working with a number of communities around the state. So we're very pleased to have him. He contacted Mr. Felix and I a number of weeks ago to tell us that there may be an opportunity to do this and potentially have substantial savings through a refinancing. He has proceeded to do that, and I'm pleased to welcome him here today. And he will give you a presentation about the process, where we're at now, the bids we received, and your next steps. So Tom, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I would like to update you on the status of the refinancing of several bond issues that are currently outstanding with the city, as the city manager had indicated to you. So I'd like to take a few minutes to kind of recap where we were and give you a status report of where we are going within the next several weeks to complete the transaction. If I can operate this correctly, we'll go to the next slide. There we go. Thanks. Let me give you a little bit of background about the interest rate environment currently. As you probably know, interest rates have been on decline for the past several years, pretty dramatically over the last three or four years. This gives you kind of a scale dating back to 1970 where interest rates have been. And if you look towards the right-hand end of that scale, you'll see the 2016-2017 time period. Even though rates are starting to ratch up a little bit in 2017, we're still in a very good interest rate environment. And so when we looked at the city's outstanding debt, which has interest rates higher than this, it looked like a good opportunity to at least pursue the idea of refinancing the bonds for savings purposes. As we indicated, this gives us an opportunity to save money, gives the city an opportunity to possibly restructure the bonds in a way that's more favorable to the city going forward. If you were to issue other bonds, we don't have restrictive covenants that would prevent us from doing the kinds of structure that you would like to do. So by refunding all of the bonds, we're able to wipe out all of those indentures and create new ones. So it does give us an opportunity to restructure the debt in that manner. In that, as I indicated, we are changing some bond covenants to get rid of some of the more restrictive ones. As the city manager indicated, there are three bonds or obligations that are outstanding. The 2008 municipal property corporation municipal facilities revenue bond has approximately $8.4 million of outstanding principal. The final maturity of that issue is January 1, 2023. And the original interest rate on those bonds, which were done not quite 10 years ago, was about 4.7%. The second one is the Series 2010 MPC revenue refunding bonds. There's about $4.3 million left to service debt on that issue, and the final maturity there is in 2021. And it was issued with an original interest rate of approximately 4%. The last one is a Series 2012 water and sewer obligation as opposed to a bond. It's essentially a bond, but they were labeled obligations. Has about $6 million of outstanding balance, and it matures in 2027. And it had an original interest rate of 2.7%. So when we look at refinancing, there are several objectives that we try to accomplish. One obviously is reduction in the interest rate. And with the interest rate environment as we have currently, we can capitalize on that interest rate reduction. Because we have lower interest rate, we can save in debt service savings. That's the principal and interest that you're paying on your current bonds. That can be lowered. One of the things that we are going to do with this transaction is reduce the number of years that the bonds are outstanding, and I'll talk about that in a moment. We're also going to be consolidating the debt. So the three bond issues that we currently have, they will be consolidated now into one. And once those bonds are paid, are provided for and paid off, they essentially go away, and we create one obligation. So we're consolidating everything from three issues down to one. One of the things that is different about this transaction than what you may have recalled in the past is that we went through a normal bond process where we went out to the marketplace, we received bids from potential investors, and we had to do an official statement and a lot of legal documents. We didn't do this, that in this transaction. We're doing what a lot of cities are doing now, which is a direct placement of bonds with financial institutions, and that's called a private placement. Couple reasons for doing that. One is you can significantly reduce the cost of issuance. We don't have to do a preliminary official statement, an official statement, all the big disclosure documents that you have to do in a public offering. And also, we save a significant amount of cost of issuance, you know, by placing bonds directly with the bank. So we're using a private placement in this case for those two reasons. The other thing that is advantageous to the placement is that we can close on a much quicker timeframe. So once the rate is set, we can close within the next several weeks. With respect to the structure of the bonds, we anticipate refinancing all of the outstanding bonds, including all of the non-callable bonds, which means that even though we technically cannot call those bonds back from the bondholders, the money that we raise in this new issue will be put into an escrow, and that escrow will then pay off all of the old bondholders. And so that's what we call the escrow trust agreement that you may see in some of the documents. That's the amount of money that's set aside to pay off all the old bondholders. We're creating a single pledge of revenue. These bonds are going to be pledging the city's excise taxes. Even though we're refinancing a water and sewer bond, the city can internally still use water and sewer revenues to make that payment. But the pledge that the lender has is the excise taxes, which was the primary pledge for the Series 2008-2010 bonds. As indicated, we're placing the bonds with a single financial institution. It reduces our cost of issuance and the time to close the transaction. And the other thing that is somewhat unique about this transaction is that the city had indicated it would like to reduce the debt. So we are reducing by one year the maturity of the 2008 bond issue, which was originally scheduled to mature in 2023. That component of it now will essentially mature in 2022. So you'll have a significant savings in debt service in that 2022 fiscal year because there won't be any debt service payments that you would have had to pay on those old bonds. And then we'll have level savings after that time period. So let's talk about where we are now and where we're going to be going in the next several weeks. We sent out proposals to approximately 10 financial institutions throughout the state. We received bids back last Thursday, and although this slide says seven, we actually received six proposals. And they ranged in interest rate from 1.88% to 2.58%, extremely aggressive and extremely low rates. So I think we caught the market at a pretty good time with these proposals. The proposal that was submitted by BBVA Compass Bank was the lowest proposal submitted at a rate of 1.88%. I must point out, though, that that rate is based on a sliding scale. So whatever, and without sounding too complicated, there's an index that's called LIBOR, which I think stands for the London Inner Bank Offering Rate. Thank you. That changes from day to day. And so the proposal said, as soon as the city is ready to fix the rate, we will then take that index and we'll apply a factor to it, and that will be your actual rate. So last Thursday, that rate was 1.88%. Today, it was recalculated, and that rate is now 1.85%. So if we can lock in today or first thing tomorrow morning, then that rate will even provide us a slightly greater savings, and instead of 1.88, it'll be 1.85. Now, the estimated debt service savings through this interest rate is approximately That was based on the 1.88% rate. At 1.85%, it's actually about $742,000, so it's increased about $20,000 more. The net present value savings, which is a calculation of what the value of your savings is over a period of time, which takes into account the time value of money, is at roughly $570,000 or 3% of the refunded bonds. This is a chart of the proposals that we received. You can see each one of the six proposers and the interest rates that were proposed for each, from each financial institution. So what is our timetable now? Once we've received these proposals and we're ready, presuming the city council approves, we're ready to proceed with closing. The first thing we'll need to do is notify the winning proposer, and I would strongly recommend the sooner we do that, the better, so that the market doesn't slip away from us. Then the bond counsel, who's Greenberg-Trower, whom you've used for quite a while for all of our legal bond work, will be completing the resolution and all the legal documents no later than the end of next week, so that we're ready for the council agenda on July 27 with the resolution and the approval of all the legal documents. And that we're hoping to, excuse me, close the transaction by no later than August 10. However, it could easily be sooner than that. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
I hear a lot of upside, Mr. Hocking.
Yes, sir.
What's the downside?
Well, I think from what we've presented and the proposals that we received from the banks, the downside potentially could be waiting, waiting for some time to commit to lock in the rate. Obviously, the risk is that the market would increase, but it could easily decrease, just as we saw from last Thursday to today. It decreased. But when it comes to this, I'm not really a betting man. I like to just take what I know. And, you know, since the rate is better than it was last week, I think that would be a prudent decision to make.
And I kind of see not acting as a downside, too. So anybody else, any questions?
Can you explain again the difference between estimated total debt service savings and estimated net present value savings?
Sure. Excellent question.
But slowly in like remedial class.
Net present value is probably one of the most difficult things for people to understand because we just don't, you know, have the concept of what the future value of money is. So let's say we bought something today, or we made an investment today that cost us $100, and it's returning $100, you know, every year for the next 10 years. Well, with inflation and cost of things going up, that $100, 10 years from now, isn't going to have the same value as it has today. And so what we do is that we run a calculation based on what, in this particular case, what the interest rate on the bond will be, approximately 2%. So we will discount that current $100 by 2% a year until we either take our investment or we want to know what date the value of that $100 is. So what this is saying is that in today's dollars, that savings is $724,000. But in the year 2027, when this is paid off, that $50,000 a year that we are saving isn't really 50,000 anymore, it's something less than that. So that's all this is, is a calculation of what the true value of what that cash flow is when you take into account inflation and cost of goods, essentially. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I feel so much smarter. Thank you.
Thank you. My question is, oh, how did you choose the banks that you chose to open the bid to?
There is another participant in this transaction, and that is, it was called the placement agent. And our industry is going through a lot of regulatory changes. And so one of the things that is in transactions like this is that we have to have a placement agent, somewhat like an underwriter for bonds. So we had to hire a placement agent to actually go out and solicit these proposals to the various financial institutions. And that placement agent is Piper Jaffrey. So they gave me the list of all of the banks that they were intending to send the proposals out to, and it consists of all of the major banks within the state that are active in purchasing municipal securities. So even though we received six bids, there were three other financial institutions that did not propose. So it actually went out to nine other, or nine total, financial institutions. And I can provide that list to you.
No, that's okay. I actually was asking that because I knew somebody else would, and I was curious, too. And also, when you, you mentioned that you chose, or the company chose banks that they knew were actively involved in purchasing these types. So that was sort of the parameter for the choices.
That's essentially the platform. That's correct.
Okay.
As I said, there are a number of cities that are, excuse me, that are placing their debt with financial institutions. And so the industry kind of knows who's in and who's not in. And frankly, that market is changing from day to day, too. It just depends on the appetite of that financial institution as to whether they want tax-exempt paper. And frankly, a lot of that is dependent upon what these banks think tax rates are going to be in the future. And so some of them are betting that corporate tax rates are going to decline, and so their appetite for this kind of paper may go away, and so they may fall out in one occasion, whereas someone else may say, you know, we need to fill our portfolio with tax exempt, and so they're still in. So you can't say that there is a fixed number of financial institutions that are the same each day. They vary from week to week and month to month.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I actually have a few questions. My first is, what covenants are we changing in the bonds? And what are we changing them to?
Excellent question. As I had indicated, one of the bonds we're refunding is the water and sewer revenue bonds. And that bond covenant requires the city pledge water and sewer revenues to the payment of that debt. This new issue will change that and not require the pledge of water and sewer revenues. But again, from a city accounting standpoint, obviously, the water and sewer system should pay for itself, so from an accounting standpoint, the city will probably continue to make those debt service payments on that portion of it with water and sewer revenue. The other covenant is the, what we call the debt service coverage ratio. There has to be a certain amount of revenue available to pay debt service. And in the past, that revenue, that coverage was, I think, three and a half times. In other words, you had to have three and a half times more excise tax revenue than what debt service was. We lowered that to three, and you have to maintain it at two times each year. So that was a changed covenant. But the biggest one was, if we didn't, and I don't mean to get technical here, but if we didn't refinance all of the bonds, including the callable bonds, we could not be able to issue these bonds with a senior lien pledge on the excise taxes. Because the old bonds were still outstanding because we didn't refinance the non-callable bonds. And so we could only issue these with a subordinate lien excise tax pledge, which, because it's a subordinate or junior lien, the interest rates are going to be higher.
Thank you. May I ask, and this is just for, I guess, just further explanation. I understand how we're refinancing the callable bonds. Could you just go through one more time for me how we're doing the non-callable?
Sure. When each bond is issued, there's a certain period of time from when you issue the bonds, and it's typically the first 10 years, you cannot call those bonds back from the bondholder. So those are non-callable.
Sure.
When we come in and do a refinancing, although we cannot call those bonds back, we will size this new bond issue sufficiently so that we have enough money to put into a separate escrow that will pay off those bonds as they come due. And that escrow has already been sized into the total size of this issue. So we're creating a separate account. It's being funded with the proceeds of this issue, and then that separate account is paying off those bondholders that we can't call their bonds until those bonds can then be called.
Okay.
Mr. Petuchek. Yes, Mr. Mayor, getting back to Christine's question real quick. The first covenant that Tom mentioned, which will place the bonds under our excise tax coverage as opposed to the water and sewer, is actually a very important facet of this refinancing. I don't anticipate that the city will be issuing any MPC debt or anything like that. So we have more than sufficient coverage of excise taxes to cover the bonds for the remainder of the term. But in the event that something occurs at our sewer plant, or we need to make upgrades, or something else happens there, we have all of that, you know, sewer fund pledge available to do something like that. So this gives us much more flexibility.
Good point. Any other questions?
I guess, I guess the next question is, Chuck, do we just need a, today we need a consensus of council? That's what it sounds like, and then we later on would have to have a vote?
Yeah, if you will, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Hocking mentioned, do we run the risk of rates going up if we don't lock them in? So I would propose that I would go ahead and make notification to BBVA. Mr. Andrew Martin is here in the audience representing BBVA. So if I do that, then we can lock in the rate where we're at right now, and then the council vote would then occur on the 27th.
Is there any objection to Mr. Petuchek doing that today?
I don't. I just, so we would be locking in the 1.85?
That's correct. Mm-hmm.
Depending on where markets move.
Okay, I see how it is.
If something blows up in the world tonight, the rate could go up.
As soon as I walk out of here, I'm going to be calling them first thing and say, let's lock in the right now.
All right, so any objection to the proposal? Okay, I think you have the consensus of council, Chuck, to proceed. Mr. Hocking, thank you for your brief but very detailed explanation of what's going on, and appreciate all your help in the past.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for all the excellent questions. Those were very good. Thanks.
Thank you. That being the only item on the city agenda, work session agenda for this work session, meeting's adjourned, and we'll reconvene at 3 o'clock for the joint work session. Thank you.
I think.
You're next. You're between the two ladies on the end.
Yeah.
You guys actually.
Okay, super. Okay, I'll keep it in mind.
Lady red.
I saw my name from out there, so I can't properly.
Doing pretty good.
Doing pretty good.
Mr. Call.
God, I gotta sit between you.
Yes, you do. And you know, we don't tolerate, we don't tolerate much, so you could get punched from either side.
I never punch.
You don't punch, what do you do?
Revenge is a death.
A dishbesser. I do punch. Sometimes I poke. Sometimes I poke.
Leave me alone, man. Stop it.
Exactly. Move over. Move over.
I don't know who friend in this one. I'm a sister.
How's business?
Oh, great.
Is it really?
Yeah, it really is. I can't complain. We're doing a great July, which usually.
Really?
Yeah. July and August are terrible.
We had some rain at our place, so.
If I wanted to find out.
The problem with owning a small business is.
I think we're probably, yeah, we're probably on time.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to Sierra Vista City Council. I want to especially thank our, welcome and thank all our guests for braving the dry Arizona weather out there to be with us today from the county. And so, I'll call our work session to order. Madam Chair.
And I'll call the work session to the Board of Supervisors to order and let it note that Peggy is not present today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we're going to discuss the Joint Communications Center. And Mr. Petucic, if you'd do the introduction, or Ms. Jacobs, whatever's going to do the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ms. English, Mr. Call. I appreciate everybody being here. As you recall, a number of months ago, there was also a joint work session where we discussed where we were with regards to the project, the next steps that needed to be taken in terms of securing a facility, getting that worked on, and also then doing the work of putting together documents, agreements, and those kind of things. And those kind of things have been occurring, and we've been in close communication both with Mr. Gilligan and with Sheriff Danals throughout this process. So, Ms. Jacobs, my assistant, has been working on the documents. And we're here today to discuss primarily the intergovernmental agreement that the county and the city would enter into forming a joint powers authority under state statute for the purpose of setting up the Joint Communications Center. So, it's a big deal and a long time coming. There's still a lot of work to be done, but if we can get through the agreement process, I think things will, you'll start seeing things come together rather quickly after this. So, with that, I don't know, Mr. Gilligan, if you have any comments you'd like to make, but please.
I don't have any further comments, and I think that, I know Mary's kind of prepared to walk us through the document. That really has been a three-part collaboration, and that's the city, the county, and in close work with the Sheriff's Department.
So, with that, I'd ask Mary to go through the presentation and walk you through the document. Please feel free to ask questions as we go through.
Right. Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, members of the board, and members of the City Council, this is, as the city manager and the county administrator mentioned, this has been truly a collaborative effort and a very complex one at that. We've been working on this for quite some time. So, the intergovernmental agreement really reflects the way that we want the JPA to function, and the structure, and all of the basically policy-level things that need to be decided by the elected bodies, not just the council and the Board of Supervisors, but those other governmental entities that will come on board to the CCOM in the future. And we do anticipate and know of several that are already in the wing. So, I'm going to just walk you through it very briefly and hit the highlights. You had the IGA, so hopefully you've had a chance to look it over, even though a lot of it is just very long and detailed. And a lot of that legalese, just want you to know, has been Britt Hanson, not me, so you can blame it on him. I tried to make it really simple, and he just, no, I'm just kidding. Actually, Britt has been a great partner as well. He and I really have done the bulk of the actual drafting and writing, and I think it really is in its very final form that will be ready to present to you in the near future. So, as you know, joint communications has been a goal of the city and the county for over 12 years. And I know that some of our longer-term members, Mr. Call, Mayor Mueller, have been considering that and discussing it for quite some time. A lot of things have been done. There was an excellent article this morning by Eric Peterman in The Herald that really outlined some of the major steps that have happened. The Sheriff's Department has put up towers, and there have been consuls added to communities as a result of private foundation money. And they will be able to give you an update at the end as to where we are in the process, because I think it's really important that you hear that. The governor provided some funding. So, all of that together has really enabled that to happen. Last year, both bodies approved a memorandum of understanding, really kind of setting the parameters for moving this forward. And of course, the IGA is the next step in that. The building is under renovation, and both teams have been working together for months now on human resources issues, on technology issues, and the two law enforcement agencies have been working together, as well as the two dispatching staffs have been working together as well. So, again, lots and lots of detail that is not included in the IGA, but forward momentum and forward progress. So, this IGA does provide the foundation for the establishment as what the city manager mentioned, a joint powers authority, which is, it's a quasi-independent entity. It is still a part of the county, but it's very specifically separate, separately accounted for. And basically, the state law was changed in order to allow for these public-to-public collaborations in the area of public safety for this very reason. And in fact, we used a lot of the information from Navajo County. They have one that is up and running, and there are other entities that have been doing joint communications for a while. So, we pulled a lot of those documents and then used those as a basis. This outlines those major policy things that need to be passed on to the board. Those things that aren't going to change. Then, the board would have bylaws, and those bylaws would then be changeable by the board members, and we'll go over that here in just a minute. And of course, as I mentioned, this serves as the foundation for an IGA that would need to be approved by other governmental entities, whether it's a municipal government or whether it's a fire district. Both are governmental, and their governing bodies would need to approve an IGA with the JPA board. So, the board would then have the ability to approve future IGAs on behalf of this new joint powers authority. So, let me touch first on the governance structure. The way that it's been structured is that the city, the city of Sierra Vista and Cochise County are designated as principals. And that's important, of course, because really, the city and county are the ones doing the bulk of the work and have the bulk of the calls, and frankly, making the largest investment in this project. And so, it's essential that there, that the city and county's role as principals have a little bit of weight, and there are some things structured in the voting structure that would indicate that it's important for at least one of the principals to be in favor of certain things that would happen in the future. So, we wanted to build that into the process. All other municipal partners would be known, municipal participants would be known as partner. So, any other cities that come on board would be known as a partner, and they would also have an equal seat on the board. So, the city and the county, and the way that the IGA is written is that the chief administrative officer of all of the municipal organizations, that would be the city manager or town manager, that would be the chief, the county administrator, they are the designated appointees on the board. And then, the fire districts collectively have one vote after three districts have gone on board. So, their number of calls is significantly less. It's important that they have a voice, but having, giving them equal weight when they don't do any of the dispatching activities really is not in the best interests of the JPA, and could unknowingly skew the JPA to go in a direction that maybe couldn't be afforded. And so, that was, that's really important. So, the bylaws are approved by the board, with the first iteration requiring concurrence by both principals. So, there needs to be a consensus. We all agree, these are the bylaws moving forward. And then, after that, it would be a majority vote if there were any changes in the board. The authority of the board is that the, and I think I have it on a future slide, but I did just want to mention that also on the board, the sheriff serves as the chair of the operations committee as an ex officio member of the board. So, the sheriff would be at all of the meetings and, of course, participate in that conversation, that discussion. The board really, you know, you saw all the responsibilities of the board, and it's typical board responsibilities. It's the board's responsibility to hire and oversee a CCOM director. They also then approve the bylaws, all of the policies, procedures, and the regulations. And then, it's the board's responsibility to evaluate all of the operations, approve a final staffing plan, you know, approve the budget, oversee all the expenditures, all of the normal things that would happen with a board of directors of an entity, including all, approving all new partners and subscribers. So, that would require concurrence of the board. And of course, the reason for that is that adding on new partners and subscribers adds to the, you know, the workload of the staff. And so, there has to be an evaluation that there's capacity, and then, of course, all of that plays into what those subscriber fees would be in the future. And so, there's some foundational principles that are included in the IGA, but ultimately, that subscriber formula is something that is in the hands of the board. And then, of course, they oversee all of the compliance issues and make sure that, you know, all of the rules and regulations, there's a lot of rules that are in place to, for any type of dispatching, records retention, records, record-keeping, that sort of thing that the board, again, would oversee through, through a director. So, that director, very, very important role. That director is responsible for just the overall operation, the management of employees, the hiring, the supervision, serves as the administrative head, does all of the detail work. You know, these are people who have other jobs. They have full-time jobs, which is why having a director is so important. So, the director would be responsible for all of that day-to-day work, working with all of the participants. That means addressing issues, following up, you know, looking at the things that need to be done, developing long-range plans, and then, working very closely with the operations committee, because it's the operations committee that I'll look, that I'll review on the next slide, that will provide that public safety level response. These are the customers, the, you know, the fire chiefs and the police chiefs who are actually receiving those calls, and they're the ones, then, who will be participating on the operations committee, which is a really, really important component of the structure of this organization. So, it's so important, in fact, that the, you know, it's the IGA that specifies that the operations committee is a standing committee. This committee is key to continued operation. The administrative, the chief administrative officers do the financial oversight and the general, they do big picture. The operations committee responsible for how are calls going? How are they being dispatched? Do we have any issues? Do we have enough capacity? Those types of things, and getting everybody together to, you know, to discuss those things. So, the membership would be all of the fire chiefs and police chiefs or their designee of all of the official participants. So, those are the participants who have been accepted by the JPA board as participants in the, so, the CCOM will be doing dispatching for all of these entities. Those are the ones who are entitled to participate and have a vote on the operations committee. They will review and approve and recommend policies and standard operating procedures. So, and that's important, because if you think about it, every organization that will be a part of this, if they're not doing their own dispatching themselves, all of the municipal governments are doing their own dispatching, and the county. The fire districts are using either the county or the city in order to do their dispatching, so they have a little bit different perspective. But, you know, everybody's going to come together initially, and that's why it's so important that our, that our two dispatching teams have been, have been working together is because everybody does things just a little bit differently. And so, there needs to be a real understanding, once everybody comes together, as to what that standard is going to be. It has to be the same for everybody. There has to be that same level of service that is provided to everybody, because everybody's going to be paying for the service based on that formula, and they deserve that same rate based on their call load. So, there needs to be those standard procedures in place that will be by everybody, and that, those will be recommended by the operations committee before they're approved by the board. So, that includes performance benchmarks, goals, that sort of thing, so that they can monitor those things. And then, of course, developing strategies for the future, making sure that they look at everything. And as I mentioned, this will be chaired by the sheriff. It does provide a provision in there that if the sheriff in the future chooses not to, not to be the chair, then they would simply elect their own chair from among the participants of the group. These are some really important foundational principles that are elaborated in the IGA that I think are important to both the city and the county. First of all, the county serves as the fiscal agent and is the employer of record, and that is a requirement of the state law that outlines the ability to establish a JPA. So, they will provide all of those usual fiscal agent services from the financials, assisting with human resources, procurement, you know, the clerk, that sort of thing in terms of postings, if that's necessary. All of that level of service will be provided. 100% of the CCOM costs must be covered by the participants. And I know that that is particularly important for the county, because the IGA very clearly specifies that those fiscal agent costs that are used are reimbursed to the county. And we know from past experience with the joint, the regional landfill and the transfer system, that, you know, there was a time that those formulas were not covering the cost. Now, that's been rectified for the future in order to pay those back, but we don't want to set this JPA up so that the county is going in hock in order to cover the costs that really are to be borne by, collectively, by all of the participants in this. So, you know, we do anticipate that the first connection together, just the city and the county, may not likely save any money for the first, because the efficiencies are the adding on the additional, where there is capacity among the staff. We do anticipate those efficiencies to happen in the future. I think we'll see some significant savings if you combine all of the dispatching costs across the county of all of the future participants. I believe that there will be, you know, a notable savings, and that's, of course, comprehensive taxpayer savings in the end. So, the participants obviously responsible for their own connecting equipment, and that's really important, because they must still have the spillman software and hardware in their jurisdictions. They must have the mobile data terminals and the appropriate radios and that sort of thing. That remains the continued responsibility of each of the participants in the, and that's no different than today. So, that would continue to be an expense that each jurisdiction would continue to budget for. Spillman technology is very clearly specified, and that's important, because right now, everybody is on that technology. And changing it is a very, very significant effort. And so, if there is a decision to move forward with changing out of spillman at some point in the future, it has to be something that is agreed upon, because it has financial implications well beyond the JPA to the individual entities as well. So, it's really very much the standard. We don't anticipate that, but, you know, we hope that this JPA has a long shelf life. And who knows what could happen in 15 or 20 years, you know, as technology changes. And so, but that it must be an agreed-upon decision by everyone because of those implications. The non-county employees that may be assigned to the jurisdiction will continue to be retained as employees by the assigning jurisdiction, and we'll give you an example specifically of the city of Sierra Vista. We have employees who have been with us in the dispatching area for a number of years. They accrue benefits as employees of the city of Sierra Vista, and it would be unfair for them to lose out on those benefits, simply because, you know, a decision has been made in order to consolidate. simply because, you know, a decision has been made in order to consolidate. So, for a time, there, there will be, you know, two employer of records and possibly in the future, depending on what happens and with other participants, you know, think about it from the employee's perspective. The, the goal is to get everybody together. And there, there would potentially be an opportunity to apply that employee's time toward their assessment, if the employee is qualified to do the work. And that, of course, is a decision that is left up to the executive director. So, we want to make sure that we have that ability. But, as the city loses employees, and those employees decide to move on, or they retire, or whatever it is, then that position would not be refilled by the city, but it would be refilled by the county. And then, they would all become county employees. So, over, after a time, all of the employees will be county employees, but we just need to deal during this transition time, because as you can imagine, change is difficult. And we don't want to add angst to our employees. It's already going to be, you know, a completely new environment in, in many ways, although they are, they are certainly working very closely together. And then, the last thing that I think is important to mention is that we are referring to this first year of operation as a merger, rather than as the, a district. And the reason why is because we need to get a really good, solid handle on all of the costs. What are the costs going to be for IT? Because the city's doing some IT, the county's doing some IT. You know, how are we going to do that? Do we hire a person? How does that work? How much time is the county going to be putting in, so we know what to include in the formula for the future assessments? You know, what are, what are the salaries going to be? And all of those things that, that need to be included. And so, each of our respective jurisdictions has continued to budget for the dispatching operation separately. And so, we will merge together for this first year while collecting all of the data, developing the, the subscription rate and the fee structure that we will put together in the springtime with the budget. And then, each of the participating jurisdictions will know what their responsibility is at that point. So, you know, it's a little bit different, but I, this was Brit's idea, and I think that it's an excellent way for us to get through this first year. There is additional sustainability and protections. You know, once you move together in a, in a joint dispatching, obviously, there are some, there would be some significant impacts if there, if, if this, this entity ceased to exist, or if a major player decided to pull out of it. And so, there are protections in there. I, I will say, and Brit and I caught this on last week, that the initial term says three years. We intend to make a modification to say, and up to an additional one year. I think whatever the maximum is, 10 years or something like that, so that we don't have to, we can continue to, to make this long-term, because this will be long-term. There, that the termination or withdrawal does require the completion of a fiscal year's assessment. So, if somebody decides that they don't want to be a part of it anymore, and it's October, and we've already built a budget based on there, even if they left, they're still responsible for their, their payment of their assessment through the rest of the fiscal year. And it does require approval of the governing bodies if there is going to be a withdrawal. So, that it's not just if there happened to have been, and I'm not in any way suggesting, we're trying to think about what could happen 15 years out, but if there was a, simply a difference of opinion at the operational level, we want to make sure that that difference of opinion doesn't affect the long-term sustainability of this operation, and that the governing bodies of any entity, that it would look to decide to do something different. Now, it's possible that there could be more regional JPAs in the future. And it might make more sense, as an example, for, you know, I don't know, a Wilcox to go with someone north, you know, maybe up in Stafford. So, it might make sense in the future. It's, you know, it's possible. So, we don't want to make it impossible, but it does need to be something that the governing body has, has a responsibility to participate in that decision. And, and of course, you know, really working very closely with the county as the fiscal agent, and that the county does serve as the legal representative of the JPA unless there is a, is a conflict, which I would not anticipate happening. But, you never know. At least with Brit, no. So, so the next steps will require approval of this IGA by both governing bodies. And after your conversation today, your discussion and, and any questions that you have, of course, we'll go back and we'll make whatever modifications need to be made to the IGA. And, and then, we'll, as soon as that gets back on an agenda, you know, perhaps early August, your first meeting in August, then the first JPA board would convene and adopt the bylaws, hire the executive director, which is the responsibility of the board, and then, of course, continue with the CCOM implementation. So, with that, I will open it up for questions. And then, once we have our conversation, the, the sheriff or Tom Alenin will come up and provide you with an update on where we are in terms of implementation so far. Thank you, Mayor. And, Madam Chair.
Don't worry, Russia wants.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, ma'am.
One of the things you mentioned, that three fire districts have to belong before they get one seat on the board.
That's correct.
And I'm wondering if that, when you go to the, the group that is working, the working group, I call it, you had a different name for it.
Operations.
Operations. Do they all get their own seat there?
Yes, they do. On the operations committee, they all get a seat, and they get a vote.
So, they're all equal on the operations, but there need to be three of them in order to have a seat on the, the big board?
That's correct. And there is only one fire district representative on the JPA board.
What have we thought about as far as redundancy? You know, I mean, we've, we've really, an important function like this, we don't want all of our eggs in one basket. What have we thought about as redundancy?
I'm going to let the sheriff answer that question, or Tom?
Missing, oops, pretty close. One thing we're going to do is, the plan is, is to shut down our sheriff's system in Bisbee at our main office and dim the lights. It'll be an operational backup center, though if something happens to our regional center here in Sierra Vista, we can light it back up within a few minutes and back on the air. So, if that's what, is that my answering your question?
Well, the one thing that concerned me was, you know, the, Sierra Vista has one major electric, you know, company.
Correct.
We need to have something that's redundant that has another electric company, I think.
Right.
So, that's why I was wondering, I mean, God forbid that something should happen. Usually, it happens with the electricity.
It's, it's a good question. And that's under the APS, APS system for electricity. Also, we're looking to have a discussion with Douglas to, to go into a backup system, which would be, as Mary's talked about, as a regional backup system.
Okay. I, I just wanted to bring it up, because I thought we needed to think about not all being in, in one place forever.
We agree.
A question I have, if you're, if you're determined, and, and your group wants to keep your employees and their benefits, et cetera, will you be still offering them their checks? You know, their time off? Their, I mean, how does that work? You know, you can't have two masters here.
I know. And, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, we have, we've had lengthy discussions about this. The way that we will be structuring it is that operationally, those employees will be working for the, for the CCOM director. And so, it really will be an operational issue on the part of the CCOM director to give them their time off, schedule them, you know, all of those types of things that would need to, to occur. And if in, if there were disciplinary actions that needed to happen, then the, the director is obligated to work with the appropriate human resources office. So, that would be either the city or the county at this point, in order to address it.
You indicated though, that the county would take over the responsibility of human resources. And I thought, okay, they're your employees, we're in charge of human resources.
Human resources, when it comes to the hiring and the support of the new people. But, there, there will be this-
Obems and we get the news.
I know. It, it sort of has to work that way, at least initially. But, the, but the board will delegate the responsibility of that day-to-day to the, the director. And, and I, you know, I feel confident that those issues will be resolved at that level. But, it is important that the director have that control.
Right.
Because the director is in charge of how the calls are being taken and, and the performance of the employees, and will be responsible for evaluating all of those employees as well.
The only other question I have at this time is, is there already a job description for this director?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, I don't, I don't know for sure, but there will be.
Because it's, as far as I'm concerned, that's a very important position.
Yes, it is.
And I know that you've used a blueprint, you know, and taken from different organizations that have done this before. So, I'm, I'm assuming that you've, you've got some examples there. But-
We do.
I think as, as soon as that's available, then people need to see the, well, the, the type of an individual that's necessary, you know, what, what that would be paid, et cetera, as a recruiting tool. So, just curious if you've already gotten that done.
Not yet.
Ms. Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did not think about this until I think you mentioned it. The fire districts don't provide their own dispatch service. So, what do they gain from being a subscriber?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, and Councilmember Ash, what they gain is, they're already receiving dispatching services from someone. They just don't do it themselves. So, unlike a local government that runs the dispatching center, either the fire districts are going right now, going through the county, or they're going through the city of Sierra Vista. It's one or the other. So, the difference is going to be how that is handled in the future, subscription rates. And, and we've also started having some significant conversations about that, because some are paying, some aren't, some are tiny, some can't afford it. And so, the, you know, the, and yet, many of them have very few calls in the grand scheme of things. And so, it needs to be, to be fair. And I'm, I'm actually going to let Ed answer, you know, some of the things that have been talked about in terms of how we deal with the, with the, the fire districts. But, what, what we hope will be in the future is a higher level of service. And as we get more subscribers, one of the things that neither entity can afford to do right now is to have dedicate, dedicated fire dispatchers. Right now, our dispatchers do everything. So, larger organizations have dedicated fire dispatchers. They have dispatchers who are trained in, you know, emergency medical, not as an EMT, but they have their EMS dispatchers. So, they can walk people through different things. But, they have to go through that training. And that is something that, that the CCOM does aspire to do, once we get enough subscribers and bring in enough revenue in order to increase the staff, so that you have that additional service level onboard. So, the fire districts would then ultimately get that level of service in the future. But, that means that there will have to be some appropriate contribution toward an enhanced level of service. And that's what is in the very early stages, to try to determine what is a fair way of calculating. You know, there, some of the, we have looked at a variety of different ways of joint dispatching centers, and how they have established rates. Some have been around for so long that they're like, yeah, it's always been this way. But, if I did it again, I'd do it this way, type of thing. So, some are based on certain, you know, number of, it's not just the calls, it's population. It, it could be, you know, some, some fixed rate that everybody pays, you know, a certain level of equally based on population size. And then, there's double counting fire district population versus, you know, gee, that's overlapping the county. And so, it really is, I've started on a conceptual formula. And it's, it's going to take a little bit of time to put something together that everybody's going to agree upon.
So, if they don't decide to become a subscriber, they will still get dispatched services?
The county is required to answer a 911 call and transfer the call. That is a requirement that is at no, dispatching is different. It, it goes well beyond that. And so, that is a requirement. And if they chose not to, that would be that minimum level of service that the regional CCOM would be required to provide, and would continue to provide.
That's a lot of clarity. Thank you. But, then, my next question is, private entities that provide ambulance service, could they become subscribers?
Yes. And the IGA does allow for subscribers, which is exactly what we call them, our subscribers. And the, the JPA board will then include a subscriber rate that will likely be based on a per-call basis, or maybe a monthly basis based on an average, or something along that line, because those are the calls that we want. And that's additional revenue, which is, of course, valuable to the CCOM and helps offset the costs of the local government.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Give it to Mr. Call, you got it.
Thank you, Mary. Please clarify for me what or who the JPA is?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, Councilmember Calhoun, the JPA is, is the CCOM, is the regional communications facility, working as a joint powers authority. So, that is the legal entity that they will be established at under the IGA with their own specific powers, authorities, and responsibilities. And so, you know, I keep talking JPA, but you're right, I just need to say CCOM, because that's what it is.
Okay. So, they're interchangeable?
They're interchangeable, yes.
And one more question. Who, who is likely not to benefit from the CCOM? Or, or be left out in the cold, or, you know, forced to become a part? What, how does that work?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, Councilmember Calhoun, I, and I'll let the, the sheriff speak to this. I do not see anyone who would not ultimately benefit from this combined joint communications facility in the future. I believe that this is the future of government partnering together, sharing resources. And this is not something that could have been done 25 years ago, because the technology didn't exist. And so, you know, in smaller towns, it was, hey, Bill, this is Sue. I've got a problem at my house. Can you send over, you know, the, the fire department, right? Because everybody knew each other. And now, they don't carry maps. You know, when I first got here, our fire departments had big, thick map books, books in there. They don't do that anymore. It's, everything is GPS. We can identify people on cell phones where they are. That technology didn't exist before. And so, that increases the capabilities and breadth, and why regional communications and, and dispatching is now a reality across the country. And, and so, we want to take advantage of that. And, you know, the way that our departments have been working together, I think, is, is a testament to their desire to take advantage of it collectively. They are doing it on a, you know, on an independent basis. But, as I mentioned, we may not see those cost savings right up front. But, I believe that there will be a cost savings over time. Or, there will be the same level of cost and, and a higher level of service, depending on what the decisions are of the governing body and that sort of thing. I did get a question, I do want to make sure that it's clear here, you know, about, well, what about budget implications? Well, that's one of the reasons why having the chief administrative officer is so important to be on the JPA board, because they're the ones recommending budgets to you. And so, if the rates go up and the costs go up, they understand what those implications are, and they can include them in the proposed budgets annually for each of the governing bodies. And so, and, and why there's that conversation. Because, you know, there may be a huge desire on the part of the operations committee to move to, you know, dedicated fire dispatching sooner rather than later. And then, there's a brutal reality about whether or not the governing bodies can afford to do that. And so, I believe that we've built in this careful balance between meeting the needs of the, you know, those who will be receiving that service and want, you know, to have that enhanced level of service. And of course, the responsibilities and obligations of each of the elected bodies to manage the budget and ensure that they can afford what it is that's being proposed. And so, we've built into the bylaws some timelines about when things happen, you know, when budgets are developed and that sort of thing, so that each of the, of the participating entities will have time to figure out whether or not, if there are cost increases, that they will be able to afford it, or make some adjustments.
Okay. Thank you.
May I add to, one, one comment that address, helps address a, a couple of questions about the, the cost and what's in it for other municipalities. And I see- the, the cost and what's in it for other municipalities, and I see, we've got the city of Bisbee police chief here who's very interested in the outcome. Although, as Mary mentioned, we realize, we, there was just too many unknowns to put together a budget for CCOM for this year and some kind of metric for sharing the costs, ultimately. We did include in here something that's very important to fire districts that may want to join, municipalities that may want to join, which is this, all this infrastructure that both the city and the county, and thanks to some benefactors have put into this, we're not gonna put those in the cost structure to try and recoup that cost from the city of Bisbee or the fire districts. We felt like those were investments that the county and city were gonna make regardless of whether additional partners joined. So I think that in terms of what's in it for them, the expectation is they're gonna get both up their game like all of us are, and they're gonna get a lower cost. That's the expectation, and when we finally crunch the numbers mid-year, sometime before the next budget season cycle rolls around, we won't know for sure. The expectation is everybody's gonna get both up their game and lower their cost, so.
Bob?
I just, I guess we're gonna hear from the sheriff, too.
Yep.
While the sheriff's getting up there, I just want to thank him for finding out the combination to the governor's secret pocketbook there. We really appreciate your efforts in getting the state actually to invest some money down here, and we understand that they're gonna be a partner, too, in this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Ms. English, Mr. Call. You know, it's an exciting time for us, and I want to thank, you know, since 2005, when this seed was first planted, I heard about it, many of us in the room were involved in those conversations, but about 2008, it died on the vine for economic decline, partners coming apart, however you want to look at it, leadership, either way, it didn't go anywhere. And something taught us something in 2011, and that was the monument fire that we all in this room experienced. Tom Alenin, Chief York, all the operators, Chief Deputy Smith in the back, all of us came together, had a massive fire in this community that we had command vehicles side by side so we could hear each other talk and run across the parking lot to see what was going on. We knew we could do a better job, and I think we have an expectation as community leaders to do that. And in 2013, hope was put back on the table. And Ms. English, you asked a question, you know, this is, this is maybe not efficient, Mary, I thought you did a great job covering this, it's probably not gonna be efficient the first, maybe two years, but down the road, I think it's gonna be a very efficient program. It's gonna be, we know it's gonna be effective and enhances public safety. I think it's gonna be one of the best regional communication centers in the state and beyond. And I'll talk about some of the things with the governor on that. In 2013, we were provided hope with Governor Ducey, him and I spoke on a regional plan with communications, he bought into it, called it magical words, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, but it worked. Second to that was the benefit of Mr. Buffett coming forward, and him and I had a conversation about what do we need most in this county. Well, speaking on the, and Chief Thrasher would appreciate this, was officer safety in Cochise County, because if you can't talk, you're in trouble. And I'll give you an example. Ms. Ash, you may ask the question about where's the negative to this? I changed the words a little bit. I don't see it, and I'll tell you, I'll give you an example right now, what happens. If there's an accident on South Highway 92, that goes into Cochise County Sheriff's Office Dispatch Center. We route it back to the service to Police Department to dispatch Fry Fire, which is out in the county. And then it has to be dispatched to the hired patrol so they can send a car. There's a lot of probability for error in that, that a regional center takes away. Second to that is, we dispatch for 21 rural fire departments, some very small, like Mary described, some a little more complex. The city of Sierra Vista, I believe, dispatches for Whetstone, Palominas, Sierra Vista, and Fry, so four fire departments. When we join here in the next few months, when we join, they all come with us. And like we started from the beginning, I've been talking to Chief York and the fire chiefs around the county, along with Commander Alenin, Police Chief then, too, we've been keeping them updated. Whether they have a radio from Radio Shack, or one of the $10,000 radios that are out there, you'll be able to talk on this system. So we're not gonna outsource anybody. The goal was to enhance public safety and how we operate in Cochise County. We broke it down to three phases back in 2013. The first phase was to bring everybody into a common CAD system, which is computerized aided dispatch. We've done that. We added Chukka City, Benson, and Wilcox. Actually, at the time, Wilcox was being dispatched by the Pima County Sheriff's Office. So all that intel was going to Pima County, and it was totally obsolete to us. We have now changed that, where everybody's on the same CAD system, Mary spoke on that, and that's Spillman, to include Fort Ruchuka, which I think is very exciting, when you have that on our back door. So we're all sharing intel, and with a regional center where everybody's in the same room, sharing that event, you know, whether it be a pursuit, that you got three agencies, we just had one a week ago, and I had three different agencies, I was listening to, I was heading to Tucson, and I was listening to it, and everybody was double talking because nobody knew exactly what was going on, because we're not talking the same theme there. So I'm very excited about it, it's very innovative, it's the way to do business in today's market. In the future, oh, I want, before I go in there, I want to say something. The first part was to bring us all together in a CAD, similar CAD system. Second phase was to upgrade the IT infrastructure within Cochise County and re-engineer that. That was a very complicated, and we got into the weeds of that, and Tom, we'll talk about that in a minute, but it was a broken system. And I'll just give you an example, and now I can say this, now that we're into the new system. In our consoles, in the sheriff's office, if our console were to broke, we could not get parts for it, which means we would have no communication in Cochise County. That's how bad our system was. So this was really important to bring all this up. So the IT infrastructure, which was a very lengthy process, and I'll let Tom speak more on that in a minute. And the third phase is the regional communication, the integration phase, which we're at here today, which is the exciting part of it. Some people said, I didn't, the believers, and then we had the non-believers, it'll never happen. Well, we're here today because it is happening, and thanks to Ed and Jim, who's no longer with us, retired, and Chuck, and Mary, and Chief York and the fire chiefs, and Tom, and Chief Thrasher, and you all for believing that we could get this done. And finally, what's the future hold for us? And there was a couple of questions that I can answer to you on that is, I've talked to Governor Ducey, he wants to take our center, once we're up and running next year, and we get some smoothness, some balance to it, it's gonna take some time, like Mary said, we all agree to that, because we all do things a little bit different, which is okay, because there is a balance in the middle there. But Governor Ducey wants to take our system here in southeast Arizona and combine that with Flagstaff, Phoenix, Tucson, and Yuma, and make a statewide system. And you're probably saying, okay, that sounds good. But what sounds good about it also is, if we agree to do that, they've, we've been in negotiation and talk, they will pay for the maintenance and software upgrades annually, which saves both bodies a lot of money, which I'm very excited about that, and I've already kind of gave the nod on that. I know that I'm not a contractual guy, I'm a public safety guy, but I think we can all go with that one. The other thing is, on that regionalization, which I think is very important in government with restraining budgets and everything else, that we need to look at regionalization, which is good. The final is, the governor's asked, and I've talked to the DPS director, is, once we're up and running, we will also add DPS into our dispatch center, and we'll start dispatching for them as one of our partners in southeast Arizona, because they may have just a couple officers on in this whole county, and to have a direct contact with us if they're in trouble, again, goes back to officer safety and community safety on that. So again, it's just, I'm very excited, and I can't tell you, since 2005, many in the room, Pat Call, many others in the room, had this vision back in '05. Eleven taught us something, thirteen, I was challenged, can you do something with it? And many of you in the room stood by me and others, and we got it done. So we're excited about it, and I know the meetings have been good, and the working group on that. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Sheriff, great job.
Thank you, appreciate it all.
I guess we may have Mr. Tom Alenin, I don't know whether they call you chief, or deputy, or superintendent, or just Tom.
Mr. Mayor, let me, if I could, for those in the room, especially in the audience may not know, Tom has served 40 years in law enforcement, just retired recently as a police chief from Service to Police Department, has, knows the understanding, the workings of the city of Sierra Vista. I've worked on him for about a year, I took him to all these meetings with the governor and all, dragged him up to Phoenix and many other places, helped me send letters to every federal agency that would take one, by the way, they didn't accept him very well, but, because we didn't get any money. But, but when Tom got ready to retire, I asked him to come over as a commander on our side of the house, but also take this task on and balance between the city and county and make it happen, and I gotta commend him and take my hat off, if I wore one, for him in regards at what he's done. So I've asked him today to come up and speak on where we're at with the regionalization when it comes to the center. Tom, the floor, just.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Supervisors, council members? Okay. The building is, is really moving forward at this point. The roof, the old DEA building was purchased by the foundation and turned over to the county. The roof has been torn off and has been replaced, there's been some more structural steel put in there for the, the high beams, but now they're really working on the internal, all the electrical stuff that needs to go in, the generators in, and we're working on all the subsystems right now. The marrying up of all the data between the city of Sierra Vista and Cochise County is far, is on the law enforcement side, we're working on that, in fact, today, setting up the server to merge both the city and the county Spillman systems together. It's gonna take us a little bit of time to do that. Projection for when the building could be turned over to the JPA is September 15th. That's when we'll get a clean building to start moving our equipment into it and going from there. One of the things that we're gonna have to deal with is on E-911. Century Link and the state is going to manage what they call managed service, E-911, and with the JPA signatures, we can go ahead as a joint powers authority requesting them to complete the study and determine when they can get us on the drawing board to set up the 911 system into the new, new regional center. The microwave has been all installed throughout the county, the 700 radio system is, is up and functional. We're working a little bit on the 150 megahertz or the VHF side, gonna be doing some testing on that over the next few weeks, and that should be going into production, probably in a couple of weeks, we'll put it totally on the air. Kind of, that's where we're at.
Questions for Commander Alenin?
I have a comment, go ahead, Ted.
Couple of questions, so Tom, when is this going to be open for business?
Best guess? Supervisor call, probably the first of the year. With the managed services, with E-911, we gotta work through that with, with the state and Century Link. And they keep telling me they have a big schedule, but we can work with them on that.
Okay, Ms. Gilligan, when, when are we gonna see this current agreement in front of the board? For approval or discussion or whatever?
Depending on the outcome of this meeting, and it seems at this point that things have been going very favorably, that our plan is to move forward as soon as possible in front of both governing boards and get agreement, signatures.
Couple of weeks, maybe, next board meeting or meeting after next?
Yeah, Mr. Call, I plan on having this on the next council agenda on the 27th.
That's great. So it'll be on ours very soon. Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, this was for Mr. Alenin. I know the first meeting on this that I came to here in Sierra Vista, and you were the, the chief of police at that time.
Correct.
I could see that you had a passion for it and a knowledge about what was going on, so I, I think my, my credibility in all of this and the ability to sort of hands-off and not get too involved was the fact that, that you were there, and, and I think that I put my trust in you, and it certainly hasn't been misplaced, and I just wanted you to know that we appreciate the work that you've done. Part of it was out of passion, part of it was because it was your job, but I think you wouldn't have taken the job had I not seen the passion in you several years ago, that you knew that this was something that you would like to have as a legacy for Cochise County, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Commander Alenin? Thanks, Tom, great job. And I guess we're at the point where I need to ask Mr. Gilligan if, is there anything that you want to conclude the meeting with? We've already talked about the future schedule.
You know, my, my observation of this is that, you know, the document is in good order, and we will be moving forward at these upcoming meetings to put the document forth and get agreement in the IGA. And after that, it's full speed ahead with some of the things that were meant in terms of identifying the roles and responsibilities of the director, meeting and convening as a JPA board, and moving forward with that structure so that we're sure in January, when that facility's ready to go, that, that our procedures are ready to go with it.
Chuck, any final comments?
Mayor Mueller and Chairwoman English, I just want to thank the governing bodies for your support of this process. It has really, really been a complex process, but the level of cooperation that, that I've seen between both the city and the county staffs, not only at our level, working with the sheriff, but, but the IT staffs and the, and the deputies and all the other people involved, has really been first-rate, and it's been really a real pleasure, and I think this is really, really going to be a good project for the future of the county.
You had a love fest today.
Love fest, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, final comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, anybody from the council or the board, final comments?
I just wanted to thank everybody for their resiliency and staying steadfast to accomplish a vision that's extremely impressive. I wasn't here back in 2005, but, but it just, well, I was here, I was on the planet, but I wasn't on, I'm gonna stop talking now, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia, anybody else? Seeing nothing else, Andy, you want to close your, your board meeting, and then I'll close the council meeting?
No further business, this work session is closed.
Seeing no other items before the council, work session is closed, thank you very much.